Buenos días a todos, bienvenidos al Ayuntamiento de Los Ángeles. Estamos esperando para iniciar la reunión del Consejo Municipal y son las 10:00 de la mañana. Tenemos a cinco o seis miembros presentes. Gracias señor Laban, señor Mieszkowski, señor Parks, señor Wise, señor Snijmeyer. Estamos diez miembros para el corm. Señor Burnson, Kalanther, Garcia, Grul, Han, Holden, Pacheco, Perry y señor Reyes. Si se encuentra en edificio, favor de pasar a la sala para iniciar la reunión. Gracias.
Buenos días, Council. Although we don't have our corm here yet, there are eight members. And we do have a number of people who are going to be receiving presentations today. So I would like to begin at this time and ask Council President Alex Bazier to come to the podium. ¿Quién se presenta al micrófono, por favor?
Thank you, Madam Chair, colleagues and members of the public. Let me begin an unofficial, or maybe we should make it an official, San Fernando High School Day at Los Angeles City Hall. What do you think?
Quiero oficialmente nombrar este día como el día de la preparatoria San Fernando.
It wasn't evident already.
Sí, es obvio. Uno de los grupos que me gustaría presentarles a ustedes es...
Is the co-ed cheer squad from San Fernando High School.
El grupo de porreras del baile de San Fernando. Pasen.
You move quicker than this when you're competing.
Cuando competen se mueve mucho más rápido. Pasen, por favor.
Colleagues, it is indeed my pleasure to...
Es un placer.
Present and introduce them to you not only as a co-ed cheer squad from San Fernando High School, but more importantly for the preparation of San Fernando.
Más importante porque han ganado el segundo lugar nacionalmente.
National.
San Fernando High School representando a las escuelas públicas en el país a California, nuestro distrito unificado de Los Ángeles, competencias llevó a cabo hace poco en Anaheim, California. Competieron con escuelas en todo el país y han dado el segundo lugar representando nuestras escuelas locales de una manera excelente. Es un año particularmente importante porque estamos celebrando el regreso y el regreso exitoso del programa bajo liderazgo y la guía del entrenador y el consejero, señora Tati.
Their cheer squad has always been good, but there's been years when it's been great.
Ellos siempre han sido buenos grupos, pero han habido años que han sido excelentes. La señora Brown estaba en un descanso por seis años pero ya ha regresado. Estamos aquí como campeones locales, estatales y...
Only one place in this country that was better than us this year.
Solamente otro lugar mejor que nosotros, señora Brown. Todos los estudiantes están certificados aquí, presentándoles a ustedes el programa por su éxito. Quiero que ustedes hagan un breve comentario. También tenemos a Rocío Choa, la capitán de este grupo de porreras.
Buenos días a todos de la comunidad de Los Ángeles. Mi nombre es Rocío Choa, uno de los captales para la co-ed cheer squad. En nombre del grupo de porreras, co-ed de la preparatoria San Fernando que hemos regresado pero conocidos como atletas, por este gran éxito en las naciones del espíritu de los Estados Unidos. Este grupo que avanzamos bastante desde un año, que tuvo mucha dedicación, responsabilidad y mucho trabajo para hacer un grupo competente. Debemos también mantener clasificaciones de 2.0 más alto. También estamos presentando sustitutos a diferentes universidades, nos da mucho gusto presentar. Al orgullo del preparador de San Fernando queremos dar las gracias a ustedes de nuevo por este reconocimiento el día de hoy. Gracias.
No, I'm asking them for a basket house, but I don't think we're... The insurance company will allow us inside here. Carlos Onofre y María Samora, our assistant coaches in the program, want to make sure they get acknowledged as well.
Una muestra, pero no nos permiten.
The head coach doesn't do it alone, the squad doesn't do it alone. Carlos is not here, but María.
Carlos, no se contra que María está aquí.
Here you go.
Felicitaciones.
Colleagues, we're familiar with spirit squads at our local high schools and universities.
Estos grupos tienen todas las escuelas, las preparatorias.
We can always use Mark here at the City Hall.
Thank you for being with us. Es el gran espíritu que ellos representan. Yo creo que nosotros sabemos que aquí también estamos más espíritu también. Felicitaciones. Si yo sé que en el entrate vamos a ser número uno, así es.
Mr. Garcia. Mr. Laban.
Don't go away, San Fernando. First of all, one special request. Did you have Coach Heim, Coach Daniel Heim, the teacher? Okay, say, tell him I said hello. We were Marshall High graduates together years ago. But Mr. President, Mr. Garcia has a motion right now, but I want a second. I would like to move that we see at least one cheer before you leave.
All right, good luck. Que le damos una presentación antes de irse. Se los dije, se los dije. Pasen, pasen. Para darnos una... hacer una porra antes de irse.
If I can make a friendly amendment that Mr. Padilla join in with us.
Un cambio también quiero hacer. Quiero pedir que el señor Padilla también les acompañe en esta porra.
While they are assembling, Ms. Grul has asked to speak. También ha pedido su presentación. No fue señor Laban. Gracias San Fernando, muchas gracias. Gracias, San Fernando, muchas gracias.
Thank you. I'll see you in a minute, we're gonna take some pictures. Thank you, colleagues. Part B of San Fernando High School Day at Los Angeles City Hall. Let me call up the 2003 Los Angeles City Champion Wrestling Team from San Fernando High School. Come forward, guys. It was all that cheer and encouragement of the squad that helped. This wrestling team become city champions for the third year in a row. Three peats. As wrestling champions in the city of Los Angeles, their third consecutive title brings their number to ten city titles in the program's history. They're now tied for the most city titles of any program of any high school in the city of Los Angeles. This year, three of the squad wrestlers represented the school and the district in the state championships in Stockton, California. Under the guidance of head coach Fernando Gonzalez, they've continued to grow this tradition at San Fernando High School. Want to recognize them, as well as Raul Uribe, the captain. Assistant coaches Mike Castillo, who was the former head coach, and has two city championships under his belt. And other assistant coaches, let me name them. Jeff Aranya, Eric Cortez, John Pires, and Terry Gillard, former students of San Fernando High School, former wrestlers in the program. It's very much a close knit community, close knit family, the wrestling squad embodies all of that. And the success as well. Can I get the captain and the captain, come forward, please?
Hello, I'm Raul Uribe, the captain of the San Fernando High School Wrestling City Championship Team. On behalf of the San Fernando High School Wrestling City Championship Team, we would like to thank our coaches for believing in us and never letting us be discouraged. And much more, we would like to thank our city council members for recognizing our achievements and our hard work. Thank you. And the trainer.
Thank you, Alex, for bringing us here and giving us our recognition here. These guys really work hard, really came from being considered to be the sixth, fifth place team in the city. And we had a lot of first year guys who made it to the finals. And really worked hard all season and the offseason to prepare for the city championship. It was their drive and motivation all year. Under a new coach myself, we had a lot of help. A lot of the younger guys, ninth graders, sophomores, who won the city championship and were in the finals. They did so without anybody really thinking that they could do it. And so their achievement really was out of nowhere. So I really think that exemplifies San Fernando always stepping up to the plate, so to speak. Against all odds. And I'm really proud of these guys. I really thank you, city council members, for recognizing us. And yes, Coach Heim did say hello. Thank you very much. But congratulate the program again, and when it comes to wrestling and baseball, football, and cheer, and all the extracurricular programs at San Fernando High School, they do promote academics first, you have to excel academically to be able to participate. And above and beyond being scholars, these men and women are solid athletes as well. Mr. Holland, this is the wrestling squad from my high school. Are you gonna behave today? If not, I'm gonna ask them for a favor. Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti.
Congratulations to the school. The chair recognizes at this time, Councilmember, Mr. Reyes. Councilmember Reyes.
Here we go. You all here? Good morning, council.
Buenos dias.
When we first got into office, we had a community meeting at Pico Union. At that Pico Union, we had parents, we had moms, we had kids, we had folks who were very upset. Because on their way to school and back from school, and into the evenings, there was this presence of folks who were, we were told, part of a ring of prostitution. And it was affecting the neighborhood in a very, very bad way. And literally, the kids that were going to school and back, the parents had to be walking through the streets and corners. Where there was a lot of substances, things on the sidewalk, that no child should be seeing. And we were very fortunate that, at that time, the crew behind me focused on this problem in a way that allowed us to demonstrate to the community, at the Pico Union area, Westlake area, didn't matter. We had motels, we had apartments, we had individuals driving around in vans in front of liquor stores. And literally violating our neighborhoods in a way that I don't even want to detail. I do want to take this opportunity, because then Chief Bernard Parks was at the helm. And we had folks from the area, the captains, who rose to the occasion. Well, over the course of last year, it gives me great pleasure to let the residents of the community know that prostitution along the Alvarado Corridor has nearly been eradicated. The folks who made that happen today is with me, and they are the Rampart Area Vice Unit. Over the course of the year, they have made literally hundreds of arrests of arrests along the corridor. And what's more important is that they have not proceeded alone in this process. They have engaged the community, working hand in hand with local residents, as well as my office. But you should know that they have worked on other issues beyond prostitution. In the Angelino Heights and Echo Park area, for example, they have worked on issues such as ticket helping. In areas such as Temple Bowery and Westlake, they have been addressing the nuisance that's created by liquor stores in that area. And it's very easy to report on this problem, but very seldom do you hear about problems being dealt with. Well, today, I'm here to let you know, the problems in our communities are being actively and aggressively dealt with. And we have these officers to thank. I can show you that, when we ask them to be there, they are there. The quality of life that they have enhanced is tremendous. We can now have the effectiveness of a clean machine that cleans sidewalks along Alvarado Commence next week. So it's not only a physical change in terms of getting our sidewalks cleaned up, but it's also understanding that we have a strong unit behind me that is doing everything in its power to address the needs of families in that area. This unit is comprised of ten officers and two sergeants. And you should know that they are only one of the only counterfeit ID investigations unit in the whole department. Members, let me present to you our team, the Rampart Area Vice Unit. This is a round of applause. With us today, we have the officers who are most involved in the vice unit, as well as Captain Thomas Runyon of Rampart. We have the two sergeants, Sergeant Randy Garcia and Sergeant Dino Duran. I'd like to offer our Captain Runyon an opportunity to speak.
Before the captain speaks, let me recognize Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Councilmember Reyes, for bringing the unit. I want to congratulate the unit as well. I know you guys have done great work in the northern parts of Rampart Division, helping us around Alvarado up near temples, as well as prostitution, with liquor stores. And I know that CD-13 stands right beside CD-1. And I want to thank Councilmember Reyes for bringing you guys in, because there's too many squads out there who don't get this recognition. But you guys all deserve it, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Zai.
Thank you, Madam President and colleagues. And it's always a pleasure to see members of the LAPD come down for recognition. And the recognition is worthy of the wonderful work you do. And we know that some people want to put a cloud on your division for something that occurred. But the good work that you folks do every single day does not go unnoticed by this body and by the people of Los Angeles, in particular the people in that area. I want also to acknowledge Councilmember Reyes, who's very concerned and committed to law enforcement in his community in the city. Congratulations to you all, and I know Captain, from your many years in those hash mark shows, the battles you've gone through, and leading the command at Rampart, it's obviously proved well for you and for the members of that particular vice operation. So congratulations to you, keep up the good work, and people here in this body do support the work you folks are doing every single day. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Zai. Councilmember Labaj.
Thank you, Madam President, and I'd like to follow Mr. Reyes, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Zai, and stand for Rampart. Rampart is part of my district too, from Hoover all the way out to Normandy. And that matters, as we know, for the public watching, this part of the city, from Harbor Freeway West all the way to about Wilton, from Beverly to Pico, is the most densely populated corridor in all of America outside of Manhattan. And the officers that work in such a confined area of space and do the job, I just wanted to stand and commend you. Because of the quality of life issues, you make a giant difference to the people. Previously, the fourth district ran all the way down to the freeway, but after years of redistricting, it wasn't. But I remember when I was a council deputy working in the area. And members, I'd also like to salute, because as Mr. Zai said, it's wonderful to have Los Angeles police officers come down here. And I wish I knew you all personally, but one of you there, who was the tallest one there by chance, happens to be a former Los Angeles City Player of the Year from Wilson High School in Los Angeles, and Randy Garcia, the sergeant. And the one great thing about it, I only wish you got to go before Alex in that presentation, so the young people from San Fernando could see it. Is you never know where you end up when you join the Los Angeles Police Department. But prior to that, being a great person from El Sereno, a great student athlete from Wilson High, led the city championship. I think you beat San Fernando in East LA that one year, if I correct. So it's been the honor of San Fernando. But anyway, I just want to say, when you walk into the room, and you're once were City Player of the Year, you always deserve to be introduced, Randy Garcia and all the officers. Congratulations to all that you're doing, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labaj. Reyes, Captain.
Thank you very much, Councilman, for recognizing these fine people, all the good work that they do. Also, thank you to the other council people in our area, Councilman Verity, Holland, Labaj. Rampart enjoys great support from the council and their staff, we greatly appreciate that. And also, I would like to thank Councilman Parks for appointing me to Rampart some sixteen months ago. And thank him for the honor and privilege to be able to work with such fine folks. Thank you very much. Thank you, Captain. Also like to call up, if they would like, the two sergeants, Sergeant Randy Garcia and Sergeant Dino Duran.
I know there's a lot of thank yous going around. I'd like to thank everybody else, the city council, Angie for all the hard work, Councilwoman Parks for her support. And I assure you that Rampart, not even patrol, but vice, is committed to serving the community. Thank you very much.
Sergeant Dino Duran. Well, he passes the opportunity to speak. What I'd like to do is we have a great crew behind us, and I'd just like to acknowledge them, their title and their name. We have with us, police officer, three Frank Avila, Clarence Mejia, if you'd raise your hand if you'd like, we're here. Martin Parejo, Ron Lee, David Mejia, Domingo Sanchez, Melissa Ayala, Craig McLaren, Sean Kim, Joel de Jesus, Rayuchi Ishitani, Steven Hernandez, Clinton Perez, Carlos Saragosa, Abby Bonner, and Raven Vialobos. Again, give them applause for doing what they do best. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes, and thank the fine officers from Rampart and the work you're doing on a daily basis. I would like to recognize at this time for presentation, Councilmember Tom Labaj.
I'm sorry, I have one more.
I'm sorry, Mr. Reyes, alright?
Members of the council, on my stationery, I have this phrase, "Home of the original suburbs." And once you hear this great story, you'll realize why. In 1976, a man by the name of Dr. Adrian Ebal came to Oakland, California, and founded the first chapter of a unique organization known as Ebal Clubs. The Oakland Ebal Club developed to a large and well organized club, became the prototype, after which other clubs were to be patterned. The Highland Park Ebal Club was organized in 1903, federated in 1905, incorporated in 1909. The object of the club is the advancement in all lines of general culture and promotion and well-being of the community. The first president of the Highland Park Ebal Club was Mrs. Robert H. Tripp, who served from 1903 to 1905. In 1908, a parcel for the clubhouse was secured, and by 1910, plans were drawn up to build the clubhouse. Finally, in 1912, the building was dedicated, and the first meeting was held in October 1912. By 1922, the membership had grown to 331, and the club needed to expand. The property adjacent to the clubhouse was purchased and converted into a dining room and full kitchen. The ceremonial laying of the cornerstone was held on May 31, 1938, followed by the dedication of the building in September 13, 1938. Members, the Ebal Club has a great history in Highland Park. In World War I and II, for example, the club's relief activities included knitting, bandage making, and the sale of war bonds and stamps. Moreover, their philanthropic and conservation efforts have included the donation of the first site for Occidental College at North Avenue 50 and Figueroa by an Ebal Club member. The establishment of the Franklin High School in 1916, the first branch library of the Royal Cycle in 1914, assistance to the Red Cross and World Wars, and the push for streetlights in Highland Park. Organized the mothers and babies in Walke programs and helped save the Royal Cycle Park from being developed into an industrial site. The Highland Park Ebal Club is located at 125 and 131 South Avenue 57. Was declared historic and cultural monuments, number 24, by the Allie City Cultural Heritage Commission. Indeed, this has become more than just a mainstay in the community of Highland Park. They have become a partner with the community. So today, it gives you great pleasure to bring them into city council, to recognize and congratulate. The Highland Park Ebal Club on its occasion of their 100th anniversary celebration on May 3, 2003. At this time, it gives you great pleasure to present the certificate of appreciation, signed by all of my colleagues. And the current president is Francis Chow. Ms. Chow, would you like to say a few words?
...for the city that are your servants out there, your public servants. In that it really demonstrated the effect of teamwork, the importance of the teamwork, and really the importance of staffing, which is a big issue that I know we talk about often. We were here last week on the budget talking about the 10th person of the task forces, and the budget does contain the restoration of 10 of those. We appreciate your continued support in restoring that 10th person on the task force for us. I'd like to just acknowledge the two members of the task force that were burned that incident, Rioque Hernandez and Dave Rogers, who have taken a step forward just to be acknowledged. They are the everyday heroes that work day and day out for us.
Firefighter Hernandez is a rookie and council member Perry, you'll recognize firefighter Rogers who used to be at Station Nine, who saved a man who he never met again from death by performing a special CPR one night on the downtown tough streets of Los Angeles. So, thank you, members, very, very much for this recognition of our task force.
Mr. Labange, Mr. Pacheco would like to say something.
Madam President and colleagues, first of all, I want to commend Councilmember Labange for bringing in the task force because I think ever since I have first met with the firefighters' union and the chief, I've told them that I think we sometimes tend to forget that the fire department is part of our public safety program here in the city of Los Angeles. So, I want to thank all the task force members and just tell you that we're working very hard to bring back the 10th member as best as we can under our current budget situation. But I think there's definitely a will among the council members to make you stronger and make you safer out there for everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Galanter.
Thank you. I actually have two things I wanted to say. I don't know how many more times I'm going to have a crowd of firefighters in here while I'm still in the city council. So, I don't want to miss an opportunity to say on behalf of all those who've been rescued by the fire department, even if you never see us again, after you've performed CPR or transported somebody to the hospital, we never forget that it was the fire department that saved us. And so, I want to say thank you again. The other thing I want to tell you is that I was talking to one of my 18-year-old neighbors the other night, last night, and he spent quite a long time. The only thing he could talk to me about is how much he wants to be a member of the L.A. Fire Department. So, I need to talk to you before you leave because I got to get this guy into your department. He is really hot to trot. He really wants to be an L.A. firefighter. He doesn't want to work for anybody else. He wants to work for us. And I thought that was a very good sign. He was a small child on the block when you guys had to come and rescue me, and obviously it influenced him as well. So, thank you for all the work you do. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Ms. Galanter. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Madam President and colleagues. I just want to offer my congratulations to you all. And I know that your fire chief attended a luncheon we had yesterday recognizing firefighters out in the San Fernando Valley in the 3rd District and many activities that take place within the fire department. Your staff, your brass is represented. So, I want to acknowledge them as well as the firefighters. And I remember from all the years I served with LAPD, that relationship between law enforcement and firefighters, and that bond's been built over the years, a very strong bond. Congratulations to you all. People take for granted what you do every single day. And I've ridden with some of the task force in the San Fernando Valley. And when that alarm rings, so impressive, no matter what you're doing, you may be eating that nice gourmet dinner, you may be lounging, watching television, when that alarm goes off, I mean, it's within seconds that they're on those rigs, barreling down the street to the call for emergency, the call for service. So, congratulations to you all. It's well deserved. Keep up the good work, and we do support every day what you folks are doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
Well, thank you very much, members. Let's salute all. Task Force 35, Los Angeles City Fire Department, Battalion Five, Division One of the Los Angeles City Fire Department, the greatest fire department in the world. Task Force 35, back to the press room. I just want to have stand and recognize from New Zealand, Frank and Shirley Best, who are here all the way. Auckland, New Zealand, welcome to Los Angeles, California.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilmember Galanter.
Thank you, Madam President. I have very mixed feelings about doing this presentation. I know you hear that all the time. But in a way, I'm really sad about this. In another way, I think I'm going to have fun with it. We are saying goodbye today to Maxine Leichter, who has worked for the Department of Environmental Affairs for 10 years, and she has done really important things for us. She's basically a coordinator of the brownfields program. Is this not true?
Just the gas station part.
Just the gas station part. Well, let me tell you about, you all know about gas stations. Gas stations are little brownfields all over the city. And every time a gas station shuts down and somebody goes in and looks at the ground, they find that there's incontrovertible evidence that there was a gas station here, and it needs to be cleaned up in order for the land to be used for anything else. Maxine has helped secure about $1 million in community revitalization money from both public and private sources. You can't, I don't know if you know how many gas stations we have in this city, but I'm not sure we even want to hear it. But Maxine is leaving. She's retiring. She and her husband, Steve, yonder, are moving. When they go rural, they really go rural. They're going to Salt Spring Island, British Columbia, where they have purchased some lovely rural land I saw pictures of the other day, and they are going to build an eco-friendly house, what else, and enjoy themselves. But I did want to say that Maxine and I first met in 1979 when I had been hired by the League of, California League of Conservation Voters to set up an L.A. office. Maxine was my very first volunteer. She called me up and she said, "My life's ambition is to be an environmentalist." And I, of course, saw a volunteer, an enthusiastic volunteer. And so, I asked her to come see me, which she did. And she was the person who really put together the Los Angeles League of Conservation Voters. Most of you know the league. Most of you have asked for its endorsement at one time or another, or spurned it, as the case may be, although I think you've asked for it. But Maxine is the person who really created the local chapter of the L.A. League of Conservation Voters. And then she did something that I really admire. She said that, decided that in order to be an environmentalist and a productive environmentalist, the thing to do was go beyond simply pointing out the problems and get involved in crafting the solutions. And that's what she's been doing as part of our city family for 10 years. So, I am especially proud, first of all, because I feel like I discovered her, although in truth, she discovered me. But, you know, I discovered her. And second, because she has done such good work for the city. I am very proud to present you, Maxine, with a city resolution. This one's just about your city stuff, the other stuff we decided we'd leave out. And I want to thank you for your work for us and wish you well, and don't worry, we're going to do this later, and wish you well in Salt Spring Island. And I'm sure you can expect, as your friends have already told you, don't build a guest house because Salt Spring Island is one of those places that all your friends will want to drop in and see. So, before you get to say, you do get the certificate. Before you get to say anything, though, Dee Allen, who is, of course, Maxine's boss, wanted to say a word or two.
Ms. Galanter, we also have Ms. Perry who would like to say a word.
Okay, well, you want to wager, okay, you go first.
Congratulations. You know, I've enjoyed working with you. You not only have a wonderful personality, but the technical skills to go with it and the commitment and the dedication. And you were enormously helpful in the projects that we worked on together in the 9th Council District. So, enjoy your retirement. And maybe you'll want to be a consultant by email or something, okay? Bye.
I think just created a new career. Dee?
I'd just like to thank Maxine for all of her dedication. And of course, I will miss her so much. She's been with us for 10 years. And Maxine's the type of person that's a go-getter. Okay, Dee, let's figure out how to do it, and let's do it. So, she kept the department on their toes, and we're really going to miss you, Maxine. But we know you will do well where you're going. And she's already been discussing this issue of maybe being a consultant and helping out in some of the environmental things. And so, we look forward to that for you, and just good luck to you.
And now, this is the moment every city employee waits for, when you get to say anything you want about the city government.
Well, I want to thank you very much for giving me the opportunity and the honor and the pleasure of being a city employee and being part of the city family. I was born here, raised here, raised my children in the city of Los Angeles, and it's just been a joy for me. For me, the concept of city family is real. It really, it's very personal and real to me. And I want you to know that the most gratifying thing for a city employee is be able to work with a council member on a project to improve the community. And I know I speak for all the other city employees I'm leaving behind, and especially the brownfields team and the environmental affairs department. Please keep those requests coming.
Good job.
Thank you very, very much.
Okay, now we go.
Thank you, Ms. Galanter. Madam Clerk, I believe, oh, Mr. Clerk, we can call the roll.
President Galanter, Garcetti, Grul, Han, Holden, Labange, Miskowski, Pacheco, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Weiss, and Padilla, 11 members present, and I'm the court, Madam President.
All right, let us go through the agenda.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Zine moves. Mr. Parks seconds. The minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Those are approved.
Before starting on the regular agenda, there's been a request by Councilmember Garcetti to continue item 13 to May 6.
There is a request for Mr. Garcetti to continue item 13 until May 6. Are there any objections? Seeing none, that will be the order.
There's also been a request to continue item 24 one week to May 9.
We've had a request to continue item 24 to May 9. Without objection, that's approved.
On the regular agenda, item seven is a confirmation of city official, Mr. Peckler Palofian, to the relocation appeals board. Public hearing has not been held, and a motion is required.
All right, and Mr. Palofian can come forward. Members, we have this commission appointment to the relocation appeals board. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Weiss and seconded by Mr. Zine. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Thank you. You are confirmed, and now begin your service.
Thank you.
Next item?
Items one and two are items noticed for public hearing, and a motion is required.
All right, we have item one before us. Is there anyone wishing to speak, members of council? There is not. I will, seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Weiss. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That matter is approved.
Items three through six are items for which public hearings have been held. On item five, a public hearing was held in the Housing and Community Development Committee, and the report and recommendations have been distributed. All council members say motion is required.
All right, members, items three to six are before us. Are there any items being called special? Any items that council wants to discuss, three to six? Seeing none, those are before us. And we will have a motion by Mr. Labange on item five. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved.
Items eight through 31 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Item 26 may be received and filed in as much as council approve that matter at its Wednesday meeting.
All right, we will call item 17 special because there is a card for speaking. Ms. Perry? Item 12 is called special. Any others? Mr. Zine? 12 and 15 by Mr. Zine. Anyone, any other items? 31 by Mr. Holden. 30 is called special by Mr. Zine. Mr. Weiss?
31.
31, all right, okay. The 28 is called special by Mr. Labange. The remainder of the items are before us. Yes, Mr. Holden?
Withdrawal special of 21, just haven't brought it.
Wait, that was 21?
31.
But Mr. Weiss called 31 special, so I think it still is on the desk as well. All right, Mr. Reyes, did you have?
12, please.
Fourth with on five, all right. Let us open the roll on the remainder items not called special. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
11 ayes, those are approved. Let me also ask item one and two go forthwith. That brings us, oh, yes, Mr. Clerk?
Item 32 on the continuation page are close session items. Do you wish to hold these on the desk?
Yes, we will hold those on the desk.
Back to the items called special. Item 12 by Councilmember Perry.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Perry.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. My rise to ask my colleagues to support this catalytic renewal project in the heart of the Fashion District, which straddles the 9th and the 14th Council District. The parking garage for this project is in the 9th, and the housing portion of this project is in the 14th. The development is located along Los Angeles streets between 7th Street and Olympic. The parking garage exactly is at 636 Maple Avenue and is a key component to the feasibility of this project. This will be an adaptive reuse of nine existing buildings and will preserve the historic character of the area. The existing alleys and tunnels that connect the buildings will be transformed into pedestrian friendly walkways and courtyards. This Santee Court project will provide a great opportunity to link different areas of downtown, including the Loaf District, the Historic Core, and the South Park area, and will create 460 market rate housing units priced for workforce affordability and 118 affordable units. The apartments will average 825 square feet. This is a mixed-use project, including 200,000 square feet of commercial and retail space. So, I hope that we can get a unanimous vote today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pacheco?
I just want to say ditto.
Mr. Zine.
I see the developer smiling, Madam President and colleagues. I know that my colleagues, Jan Perry and Nick Pacheco, are trying to do everything possible to clean up an area that really needs to be improved. I would just ask regarding the fund transfer, are there sufficient funds in those accounts to make that transfer? Yes? That's my only concern.
All right, well, we can have that question addressed. During, in the meantime, we have had a card submitted, and this is a required public hearing. So, while we're having the address, we can recognize you after we open the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Let me call forward at this time, Mark Weinstein.
I first just want to thank you in advance for your support. This has been quite a journey. The other night, I met Buzz Aldrin, who was one of the first people to walk on the moon, and I thought that was a miracle. But getting the financing to make this project happen has been even harder. And I have six lenders that I syndicated and put together over one year to get them to say yes to the loan. The loan will fund today contingent upon us being able to do the parking. So, this is one giant step for downtown, one giant leap for me. Thank you in advance for your support.
That was, that concludes the public hearing. That was the only card we had submitted. The CLA is coming forward, I think, to answer Mr. Zine's questions. Mr. Zine, you have the floor. The CLA will answer your question.
In terms of the parking fund, as you recall, we allocated $43 million for the man-girl purchase from the parking fund. We only used 36 of that, so this is a reallocation of some of that funding. The EDA grant application was already allocated, a total $2.00 million. So, this is just a portion of that.
Mr. Zine, did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you, satisfactory.
All right, there are no other public speakers. We have the matter before us as presented, the communication from the chair. So, Ms. Perry moves. Mr. Pacheco seconds. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That matter is approved. We'll send that forthwith as well. Next item?
Item number 15 called special by Councilmember Zine.
Thank you, Madam President. Do we have a representative of the city attorney's office share this matter?
No, we don't. I placed the call, and I believe she's on our desk.
Let's hold item 15 on the desk and go on to the next item.
Oh, excuse me, she's here.
All right, so the attorney is coming forward, so.
Thank you, so we don't have to hold it on the desk. Good morning. A question I have on this, this particular item, LAPD will no longer respond to alarm. And it's an advertisement from a company that I believe is trying to capitalize on a proposed possible change in LAPD dispatch policy, which hasn't taken effect. These signs have sprung up throughout the San Fernando Valley, causing great concern and distress to many of my constituents and believing that it's not only false advertising, but it deserves and disrespects the LAPD, men and women of that department, who do respond to calls and trying to find out what we can do regarding the false advertising. And this bold action that moves around on these trailers every three days because they don't want to receive parking citations, and they cover the San Fernando Valley. I don't know if it's in other areas of the city, but I know in my district in particular, they have been strategically on major thoroughfares. So, my question is, what can we do regarding the false advertising? And the disgrace that this is causing, and the alarm it's causing for people in the community regarding this possible change of the LAPD dispatch policy to alarms.
Well, I think the first thing we're doing right now is to pass this motion to our office for investigation. We have started preliminary investigation to look into the matter, and we're aware of what's going on. I've spoken to members of your office as well as people from the LAPD Division. I'm currently investigating with the status of the law, the municipal code sections, as well as possibly the false advertising charges. Once we gather enough evidence, we will take appropriate action from a criminal side. So, I think this is the first, which is to pass this motion to bring it to our office, and then we will gather the evidence to take the appropriate action at that time.
Okay, so that'll be my request, that we move on this item, we approve this item, give the attorney the authority, the jurisdiction, to investigate and to seek whatever actions appropriate. So, this operation will cease and desist.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. The chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
I don't know, you don't have a case.
We're gathering facts right now.
You don't have a case, and you know you don't have a case. And the reason why you don't have a case, the commission has already taken action on false alarms, and they directed the police department not to respond to them. Based on the action of the police commission, they come wrong. And the city council refused to take jurisdiction of the matter. Is that true?
At this time, I don't know if that's true or false. My understanding.
It is true. It's true. The council did not take jurisdiction over that issue to rescind, in an effort to rescind what the police commission had done. And even after we discussed it, the police commission stated publicly that no matter what we did, that order directed by the police commission would be in effect, period. Now, how are you going to go to court and set that aside? You can't. Now, if you change the, if police commission changed, if the police commission changed its position, then it's not, it's not a demand, it's a demand for us. And we're going to have to, it's a lot of clarity. You just, it's like, what is it going to be?
Well, at this point, I'm not sure. I'm not sure because we've started preliminary investigation, and I don't have conclusions of the investigation at this time. I'm sorry. I was told that the commission had passed the recommendation, they were going to meet in May 13th of May.
They don't have to pay for the recommendation. The recommendation of the police commission said not to respond to alarms, period. Okay? And you go read that, and that's what we were considering when the city council refused to take jurisdiction to respond to that order directed by the police commission, period. And when we discussed it, the president of the police commission said, notwithstanding what action you will not consider it, therefore the police commission, the position stands. Now, if they decide to change their mind, that's different. Today, the law is. This is the correct, this is not false advertising.
With all due respect, I'm not sure at this time what is the current law on the law for response by the LAPD.
Well, you have somebody come down and talk to the current lawyers.
I have spoken to someone at the police commission.
What did you say?
They said that there was no new law in effect right now. They were going with the old law. They had adopted a policy in January that was not going to be effective until the commission has the task force recommendation, and that meeting is set on May 13th.
The commission never said they were not going to affect the next time. They said we're not going to affect for 60 days.
They said 60 days. When I spoke with Lieutenant Kirk of LAPD, that was the recommendation.
I understand what Mr. Zine is saying.
I know what you're saying.
But the fact is that it's truth, it's truth.
The truth is the truth.
The police commission said we're not going to affect for 60 days. They gave us 60 days to review the matter.
60 days are coming down.
The police commission said not even agenda.
If after investigation we find that there are no violations, we can proceed on that. That's our recommendation.
Thank you.
So, that's what we will do.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Chair recognizes Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, just for a point of clarification, the advertisement states LAPD will no longer respond to your alarm. Now, the police commission recommended a response. It does not mean the LAPD will not respond to an alarm. It does not mean the LAPD will not respond to a panic alarm. And the police commission established a task force, the representatives from the industry, the councils, and those individuals made recommendations, which this body approved. And it went back to the police commission. So, at this particular time, LAPD is still responding to every single alarm call. Nothing has changed their dispatch response policy. And the concern I have is a commitment that we have from the police commission that we will do what's right.
The group that sends the patrol, we have a commitment that the commission will do what's right for the community, and this publicity has been on the streets of Los Angeles for a long period. It's false advertising. The police commission's policy has not changed. They have not implemented the verification. They're still reviewing. And it may take a number of months to come back if changes make my mind. This is a false advertising.
At this particular time, it needs to be addressed. And we need to take action against it.
We need to take action to alleviate fear in people's minds. And so, the LAPD does not receive criticism and disrespect when it's not due because those officers are still doing what they're paid to do. So, I understand.
I understand. Questions and concerns.
But the police commission has given us a commitment, the task force completed their work, this body approved it. So, this advertising, this particular time, is not effective since the LAPD still responds. And whatever happens down the road, happens down the road. But I think we need to take action on this. We need to take action now.
When you take action now, so we can alleviate fear in people's minds.
The alarm controversy erupted. The alarm industry sent out notices that the police would not respond. We don't need to antagonize the people of our community. We try to help them and protect them and do what is right for them. And when we have false advertising such as this, I think it's our responsibility to take action. And I commend the city attorney's office for getting involved in it and finding out what we can do. And clearly, at this particular time, they are involved in false advertising and discredit to the LAPD. And I believe we need to take action today on it. And I would request that my colleagues support that action, give the city authority, jurisdiction, and pursue that investigation and take appropriate action.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. The chair recognizes Councilmember Holden.
The photograph on item 15 was taken April 25, 2003. The 60 days that was granted by the police commission for the task force, if you back off from that, those 60 days have come and gone as of 21st, 2003, which does not make it false advertising. I would suggest, if you're correct.
Mr. Zine is correct.
You, this investigation should not drag on. I would admit your motion, Mr. Zine, to say that we get a restraining order temporarily. Otherwise, if you're right, ask the city attorney immediately to request a restraining order to keep these people from advertising.
The city will pursue all avenues of remedies available to us, and if that includes a restraining order, we will certainly look into that as well. Again, our investigation is preliminary at this point, and once we do get a full investigation, we will be able to address the problem with all the solutions, and that may include a restraining order.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Zine.
Thank you. I think this is a.
investigación total podremos tratar con este problema con todas las soluciones y esto puede incluir una orden de victoria.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Zine.
Thank you, I think this is a volleyball match.
Creo que este es un juego de voleibol yo no tengo problema con una orden de victoria nada más por lo que quiero hacer es darle la fiscalía municipal la jurisdicción la autoridad para proceder adecuadamente yo soy abogado mi colega Holden tampoco es abogado tenemos abogados que lideran para hacer decisiones lo que estoy pidiendo es que la fiscalía municipal con su experiencia y su juicio hagan lo que cree que es lo adecuado si es una orden de victoria que se lleve a cabo si es alguna acción civil o acción criminal y hagan lo que tenga que hacer hagan algo y no tengo problema yo con la orden de victoria si ustedes la acción adecuada pero quizás en el encuentro quiero darle la puerta para que así continúen con lo que tienen que hacer y hacerlo adecuado.
Thank you, we have no one else wishing to speak at this time, so we have the motion in front of us as advised by Mr. Holden and Mr. Zine. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. That is approved. Next item?
Item seventeen is called special inasmuch as the cards have been submitted.
Let me now call forward on item seventeen Christine Peters. On item seventeen.
Good morning, council members. My name is Christine Peters and I am a district representative of the Echo Park Elysian Neighborhood Council. I have been actively involved in various stages of opposition to the Grand Avenue realignment and street improvement project. I was a part of the environmental group that tried to save twenty of the fifty-five trees that were taken down when they commenced the Grand Avenue construction project. My problem with this motion, I put many calls out to various council offices trying to get clarification for my own benefit, is why we would declare a construction project a special event and especially when no information has been submitted relative to the fees and costs that would be absorbed by the city. The construction project is a county project, it is seconded by the Music Center, it is not a city project. The fees we would be waiving are fees that would be coming into the city of Los Angeles. I know we're in a budget crisis right now and I hate to see the city lose any fees that we could absorb from the county as they certainly are happy to charge us anytime they can. So I respectfully ask all members of the council to at least let's please look at the amount of money that we're losing from the county as all of the other special event requirements have disclosed how much money we are forfeiting and I respectfully ask you know how much money over the six-month period of construction the city will be waiving to the county of Los Angeles before we move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Glanter.
This is the same county that's suing us over the downtown redevelopment project, is it not? For which we are waiving the fees. Shouldn't we at least get something in exchange for waiving the fees?
I don't know if you asked me. Ms. Perry has asked to speak. I don't know if you...
Okay, maybe you can explain that one.
Chair recognizes Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. The reason and the councilwoman Glanter is correct although we're trying to work through that issue as well very quickly so that we can begin to generate much-needed tax increment downtown.
Well, but my question is maybe this is a way to help resolve.
I understand. In the interest of moving this project along expeditiously because of the significant traffic impacts as people come and go through the major arteries downtown and noting that the Music Center is a major cultural asset and tourist attraction, I felt that it was in the best interest of this realignment to be as supportive as we can. I think that the request made by the woman who just spoke asking for accounting on how much was the impact of the fee waiver is a good one and I would like to request that information be provided as I don't know if I have to do that as an amendment to this motion.
We'll amend the motion to ask that a report came back on the accounting for the action afterwards.
Yes, and I'm not sure if it's more logical to have a report back once the project is completed or perhaps halfway through.
Es más exacto que este report ya que termina el proyecto quizás la mitad de se no creo que estamos seguros hasta tanto cuánto tiempo tomado que si está...
Hold my time. I really don't want to have a debate here. I'm trying to work this out.
Estoy preocupando pero también quiero tener aquí un debate quiero llegar a una solución me parece que si usted piensa que es un momento urgente el día de hoy creo que tiene sentido utilizar la petición del público y usted para más recibir más información como oportunidad de cada...
Further your negotiations with the county and then come...
Adicionalmente con el costado y quizás manténgalo demuéralo una semana dos semanas hasta siguiente martes pero si le tiempo para que tengamos un reporte estatus antes de votar para ver cuánta cantidad está involucrada y también en el proceso que usted está haciendo para nosotros.
Right, okay, yeah, that's a good suggestion and I would accept that or do you want to make...
Well, let's just... They request us to continue this until perhaps... How long do you think it'll take to get a report back?
Um, I'd say reasonably probably two weeks.
Dos semanas razonablemente.
All right, and do we have the date two weeks from today, Mr. Perry?
May 16th.
All right, this matter we have a motion to continue this for that information to be forthcoming until May 16th. I believe there's no objection to that, so that will be the order. Thank you, next item?
Item 28 called special by Councilmember LeBlanc.
Chair recognizes Councilmember LeBlanc.
Members, I just requested we call this an urgent necessity of a property as requested by the Board of Public Works to act in an urgent necessity and ask for an eye vote. Thank you.
The matter is before us as requested by Mr. LeBlanc. No one else wishes to speak. Madam Perry, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Eleven aye, that matter is approved. Fourth with on that as well.
Item number thirty called special by Councilmember Parks.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Parks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is to amend the motion for number thirty that just adds the proposal to the file and ask for an eye vote.
All right, we have that amendment that Mr. Parks has indicated. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Eleven aye, that matter is approved.
Item thirty-one called special by Councilmember Weiss.
Item thirty-one was called by Mr. Weiss but we also have cards on the file. Do you want to have the public hearing first or would you like to present it, Mr. Weiss?
I have no objections. Are we on over here? I just know from conversations with staff that the matter needs to be referred to the Budget Finance Committee because there's some questions about how to access this trust fund, so I'll move it to committee. If there are people from the public here who want to speak, then by all means they should speak.
Let's give them that opportunity. I think this is a required public hearing, so we have five cards that were submitted. Let me call your names and ask you to come forward and testify. You have heard Mr. Weiss indicate that he wants to send this to committee for further discussion and consideration, but we will take your testimony now. Denise Edwards, you want to pass? Calvin Hall? Mr. Holden?
One more, I think that, oh yeah, coming in. I think if you come here to speak on this issue, you should do that.
They still have to hablar aquí para hablar. They still have to hacer lahorita.
I would just like to thank the council for letting me talk. I just want to say that I support the proposal. It makes sense. If you remember, I was here at one point in time and had concerns which I expressed in council about the advisability of where some money was being spent fixing sewers. This needs to be done. This is not the sewer that is directly behind the one that we were most concerned about, but if this one isn't fixed with the tiles falling down, it will plug up another sewer. So I think that the staff and whoever was working on this project, if they're doing the right thing, unless one to say that we support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. The other two cards that were submitted were Terrence Montgomery and Robert Manley.
Good morning, members of the council. I just wanted to say that I support this project. I think that we're doing the right thing, taking a proactive approach and dealing with a problem before it becomes a real problem. And by acting on this project, we prevent that from happening and I support this project.
Mr. Manley.
Many to Robert Manley and I support the project wholeheartedly as Terry Montgomery had just stated. Thank you.
All right, that will close the public hearing at this time. We've had a motion from Mr. Weiss to send this to committee, so without objection that will be sent to committee. I'm sorry.
Do this thing right. Do you see my name on the board?
Mr. Holden, let me call you.
No, my name, my microphone, gracias.
Huh? I pushed my button already. You know, when it comes to my district, it's always an effort to railroad, an idea which does not solve the problem, which they've lived with for years. They're concerned about the odor being emanated at the corner of Los Yenega Rodeo. Mr. Weiss was here, he's ignored the people who came on to speak because he's been doing something else and that's how he feels about these people in my view. The fact of the matter, when the baykeepers were here and you were down there speaking for the baykeepers, stand up, were you speaking for the baykeepers on that issue, yes or no? You all came down here for that issue. And now this is similar or identical to the problem that you discussed, the odor in the area. Since you had that hearing, we had a separate hearing with the department reporting to you in the district and hopefully we could come up with a solution for the problem. We wanted to reel it okay, that sewer line because it was incomplete. The fact of the matter is that this report was dated 2002 January, it says the Bureau of Engineering has been requested to prepare plans to construct a new sewer at Jefferson Boulevard adjacent to Bologna Creek to replace this portion of the line which was built in 1925. And it is eroding. It does need to be repaired. The fact of the matter is that...
Tiene que ser reparado. Está derrumbando el hecho es de que os está pudiendo...
See, unless someone is sensitive to your needs and willing to respond to it. The problem going on for another seventy-five years.
¿Cinco años?
Eighty years.
¿Ochenta años?
This sewer line is collapsing. And by whatever reason, they wanted to delay it. It doesn't make sense to me. Nor does it make sense to you.
Tampoco tiene sentido para mí ni para ustedes.
The fact of the matter is that if they're going to commit it all, they should go to the Environment Department, that's where rightfully they belong.
Se ha presentado un comité de calidad del ambiente donde pertenece y queremos un reporte del CLA y del SAO. Después plantearse este comité y si el señor Pacheco no estaría considerado esto también no tengo problema con eso el hecho es de que la primera comité, el primer comité que debe de repasar esto es el comité que mencioné previamente porque su problema tiene que ver con el drenaje que tiene que pasar por el comité de calidad del ambiente. Pido que se ha enviado a ese comité. Esto está cambiando, está cambiando la emoción de...
Weiss's motion to have it come to Environmental Committee, you said there was no objection to Budget and Finance as well, but it will be first sent to Environmental Quality.
No, no objection to both of those committees. No, no tengo que se ha enviado ambos comités si esto es lo que queremos. Tenemos personas que puede explicar al público por hacer una protesta que esto se ha enviado.
There are three other people looking to speak, so let me call at this time Mr. Parks. There is a friendly amendment then to the other committees as well.
Es un cambio nuestro para enviar al otro comité también gracias señor Parks este asunto. Quizás el asunto principal que la comunidad también ha mencionado tenemos una comunidad de Baldwin Hills, Baldwin Hills has sufrido con un problema de drenaje por más de diez años creo yo que... Si estuvimos en el departamento de limpieza aquí dirían que es lo que corrigieron el 27 y hay problemas que el olor está presente aunque estamos a la cerca de un plan de tratamiento de olor y otros drenajes están en una parte ya muy vieja la ciudad estos drenajes son mucho más pequeños la capacidad es muchísima y nos damos cuenta que ellos continuarán. Así que necesito que se envíe a un comité que pongamos una fecha límite para que rápidamente remeranes porque personas están viviendo con esto diariamente este problema quizás no nosotros no sufrimos con esto solamente cuando pasamos por y vivir en la comunidad ellos merecen que este problema se solucione creo que rápidamente cambiamos uno punto y algo menos desde este mismo fondo de cuenta fiduciaria para contratar una nueva fundación para este mismo cuenta de fondo de fiduciaria tiene que estar ahí también para resolver este problema creo que sí lo enviamos a esos comités que nos dan un reporte en dos semanas porque esas personas merecen acción inmediata.
We will try to have a time limit on that. Budget and Finance Committee is meeting in budget regularly, so they may not be able to meet within a week or less. Try two weeks.
Muy pronto quizás no una semana pero una que demore una semana señora Glanter.
Yeah, it's been a while since this area was close to my district, but I know that the problem of repairing sewers is a very urgent one. What I'm not clear about is this is described on the agenda, relocation project. If what is triggering the relocation is related to a private development, we normally would charge, I believe we would normally charge the private developer a fee to at least hook up with the sewers. And I... One of the things I'm very proud of is that we actually, as a result of some serious cost studies when we were looking at cost, we were actually able to reduce the sewer hookup fee by sixty-six percent. It's the biggest single fee reduction in the history of the city of Los Angeles. Because it's based on the actual cost of hooking up. And if we were able to make that kind of reduction, we'll see if we can make this type of reduction and say I have a private interest. Personalmente me gustaría ver el interés privado que contribuye a la ubicación y no sacarlo todo de una cuenta fiduciaria del público. Pero esto tiene que ser enviado a estos comités, la calidad ambiental y también para presupuestos. Yo quiero apoyar que esto se arregle no hay que nuestro sistema de drenaje necesita muchas mejoras y para todo el área de limpieza está entrando esto para estar visto.
La dentro de estas pipas de drenaje esta están que siempre tiene que ser cambiadas.
I think we should just hear from the staff folks who are here who can explain to everybody who wants to see this important infrastructure improvements occur, what the impediments are just in terms of the actual use of the actual funds.
Let the staff to come forward.
El personal de Departamento de Servicios, Obras Públicas.
Good morning, I'm Wayne Moore, Director of Financial Management. And the issue that we're concerned about is the use of the trust fund for this type of activity. The funds that are in the Public Works Trust Fund are in there for fiduciary purposes. They're deposits primarily for specific public improvement projects and there is no appropriations allowed out of this trust fund account. So this is not an appropriate source of funds for the particular project that's being proposed.
¿Alguna otra fuente?
There has been some discussion of alternative ways to fund it. We had some discussions this week. Lisa Maori, Bureau of Sanitation, the other source of funding would be the Sewer Construction and Maintenance Fund. And one of the other issues besides the use of Public Works Trust Fund is that in sanitation, we feel that there is a technical need to have a rehabilitation of the sewer. We don't necessarily think that relocation of the sewer is necessary. We have however offered to pay an amount equivalent to what we would have paid rehabbing it towards the relocation. One other item, the motion mentioned, 2.6 million dollars difference. This was based on presupuestos que se hicieron en el reporte de enero 2002 que el consejo al Holden mencionó. Desde entonces, el Departamento de Ingeniería tiene mejor informaciones acerca de la condición actual de este lugar y el costo aumentado. Lo tanto estamos considerando falta entre el mejoramiento y el cambio de cuatro punto uno millones de dólares aproximadamente.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss.
You know, all I would say is that I think my record is pretty clear that there are, I don't think there are many people in this building who are more committed than I am to change the policies of this city when it comes to sewer discharges in neighborhoods throughout the city. Most significantly, I should know that neighborhoods that are not in my district. And I am strongly committed to changing the way this city does business when it comes to sewer discharges. In fact, I see strong issues of environmental justice.
Yo veo asuntos sumamente importantes de justicia mental que serán los sueltos por...
How messed up L.A. city sewers have been and can get.
El estado actual de estos drenajes, habiendo dicho esto. La presentación es bastante clara acerca del propósito de esta cuenta y los usos adecuados de los dineros dentro de esta cuenta, además.
It's been a very sobering week and a half for those of us on the Budget and Finance Committee as we're grappling with the prospect of enormous deficits in the city. And we face the need to stretch in every which direction for every possible good project. And so I think we need the matter resolved soon. I don't know whether Budget and Finance frankly is going to be able to port out in a week or two.
Creo que este asunto de drenaje tiene que haberse acabado. No sabemos cómo se pagará, pero quizás aún tiene que haber desarrollo adicional de este asunto. Las personas en esta mesa nos han dicho legalmente que no pueden utilizar el dinero de esta cuenta para el propósito previo. Pero tiene que ser enviado a estos comités para...
Thank you, Ms. Weiss. She recognizes Mr. Reyes.
Sí, señor Reyes.
Colleagues, as we get into these crunches of resources that need...
Enfrentamos estas necesidades, estos fuentes de recursos. Es muy obvio que hay otras partes en nuestra ciudad que tienen grandes presiones. Tenemos que enfocarnos en cómo vamos a poder mejorar estos problemas. Tiene mucho que ver con justicia mental. Por tanto, yo entiendo la necesidad de limitar los dolores y hacer lo que han dicho esta mañana, pero yo también siento seriamente que tenemos que seguir el proceso adecuado porque eso nos permitirá proceder hacia una dirección de manera equilibrada y así tratar el asunto de debate como lo... Puede considerarse así. Yo estoy en común en el sentido de cómo empezó este proceso. Empezó con un proyecto en un área, después algo más fue junto a eso. Estaba bastante claro cómo es que este proyecto se junto a este otro y estamos dando las cuentas acerca de cuánta fiducia tiene, ciertas funciones y ciertas posiciones. Y cada consigno tiene prioridad y cómo quiere mejorar esos necesidades, pero para inyectarlo y no permitir un diálogo y un debate en formato de comité para ver si esto es la manera que debemos... La manera que debemos proceder, eso no está poco más. Pero que se ha enviado al comité para entender lo que estamos haciendo con nuestros recursos, ya que tenemos un tiempo limitado y tenemos limitaciones y presiones que están. Yo creo que el hecho que debemos de considerar estas áreas que tienen este tipo de cosas también hay que reconocer que hay un proceso fijo para llegar a esas decisiones. Eso es lo que yo quiero ver que hagamos como un grupo, sino va a ser una bolsa abierta y cada vez que quieramos incluir dinero para un proyecto lo haremos. Estamos aquí para defender nuestra comunidad, para representar nuestra... Pero se puede hacer de una manera que permite que este proceso tome su curso.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Chair recognizes Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I want to say a couple of things. Number one, I respect what Mr. Holden is attempting to do here. I think it pushes the envelope and puts a conversation out here in public on the table that I think we need to have. And I think Mr. Weiss is very, very much on point when he says, you know, in many cases the city does need to rethink its policy on the way that it handles certain issues. Yes, there is a process, there should be a process, but I can tell you firsthand, based on conversations that I've had with representatives of the department and my own efforts, try to use the trust fund to be able to fund, not sidewalk repair, but to put in sidewalks when the city has made commitments ten years ago that haven't, or new curbs, new gutters hasn't been done yet. And, you know, in the ninth district every year, it's, "We don't have any money, we don't have enough money," or we get it encumbered and then it doesn't get done because we have budget cuts on a going forward basis. And so I'm watching this situation very carefully to see how we handle it as a body because it may translate into some appropriate policy changes. A particular concern with this trust fund and probably other trust funds is when other departments have taken money from the trust fund and then it has never been paid back or reimbursed or repunished. And then we're in a situation like this where we have demonstrated community need and, you know, the traditional response is given to the community. And in effect, we are here to take, you know, policy and shape it and make it relevant to the people that we serve. And so I want you to know that this is significant to the ninth council district as well.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
Señor Holden.
This is the legislative process.
Esto es un proceso legislativo.
This problem has gone unnoticed for years, since 1925.
Esto ha estado corriendo desde 1935.
That's why EPA sued the city of Los Angeles.
Por eso que... Los agentes les fue de mirado porque no contestaban, no habían la necesidad. Por eso que... Es que pagan, la ciudad nos está pagando cinco millones de dólares más por... Cinco millones más por el agua.
That's why they're doing that.
La línea de drenaje. Cerraron la calle, cerraron sus ojos y se dijo, "Hay que seguir el proceso."
Closed their ears. And it probably dragged on and on and on.
Este problema continuó y continuó y continuó.
And that's why people complain about what we're paying for sewer service charges today. Now, I must tell you that social justice, yes. We have a problem in that area. We had a problem our first took off of when the sewer line caved in, not rodeo, built in 1925. Stench was all over the area. You had to put people discreet in the backyards of the residential people who live in the area until you could put a sleeve on it and remove it. Took a week or so to remove that gunk from the neighborhood. Are you going to wait until that happened again?
Bueno, espero hasta que esto ocurra de nuevo. Es una parte del proyecto de desarrollo. Por lo tanto...
So therefore, it's not... That's not the driving force.
Esa no es... La fuerza principal, la fuerza que parece de que necesitan reparar. La parte que dice que tiene que repararse ahora, esto tiene naturaleza urgente.
There is a trust fund, yes.
Hay una cuenta fiduciaria, sí.
Notwithstanding what you say, you use a trust fund to do transit line down Santa Monica Boulevard. Eight votes can do what you want to do, or whatever you decide you want to do, however you think you're influenced by what the political climate is at a given time. Then that's what you respond to. You don't feel the pressure from the community yet, but you will. The fact of the matter is that we can apply the pressure the same as other communities, but the other communities don't have to apply that pressure. All they have to do is just make a simple request and then you comply. That's a problem for me, it has been. It should be a problem for Mr. Reyes also. It should be a problem for all of us who served in the city.
Los que servimos en esta ciudad.
Where these utilities are old and dilapidated and are collapsing.
Están viejos, están ya de...
And in need of repair.
Se están cayendo y...
As they borrowed the money and they're repaying it, we can do the same. The sewer service charge management fund.
Tenés que hacer lo mismo. Del fondo de administración, de la cuenta para...
Right on. That's what the money is probably set aside for that purpose anyway.
Alcantarillas.
Now, if we were to go ahead and relocate this line, improve it, which we have to do anyway.
Mejoramos, lo cual tenemos que hacer de dos modos, claro.
Of course, when the developer comes in and encourages the developer to come in and they can contribute to the services that we provide for them in advance.
Inicia, nos une nosotros y claro, van a contribuir. Entonces, si no quedamos así, estamos en este proceso. Espero es un proceso que de vez en cuando se acabó hace diez, veinte, treinta años. Nos suprimos entonces que las alcantarillas tenían que mejorar, entonces usted que EPA nos iba a demandar si no estábamos dentro, realmente eso es lo que hicieron.
What did it take to wake us up?
Que es lo que necesitamos para hacer que nos espéremos.
Yes, it'll go to committee, but I hope Mr. Pacheco will set aside some time to get this out of committee ASAP.
Espero que sea Pacheco que tenga tiempo para que esta falta de comité, lo más importante sea la plazidad. Ahora es...
And why not?
Mucho más...
Wait until the sewer lines are collapsing in your district.
Entonces, esto es hasta que las alcantarillas se cagan, se estrechó. Y según el alcohol que se me ocurrió, se cayó el distrito, cayó. Lo mismo es parte de la alcantarilla que le rompió y tuvo que ser reparada.
Santa Monica Boulevard would have been present a lot, and it didn't collapse.
Con este...
They just repairing this...
No, no...
Preventive maintenance, preventative maintenance.
Se rompió, ¿por qué? Porque es un mantenimiento preventivo, tiene que hacerse ahora.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Chair recognizes Ms. Galanter.
Well, let me tell you, I've seen collapsed sewers too. The one I saw was in Playa del Rey. Que llamaba Zaquevillo, fue en Playa del Rey. Clearly a more affluent community, and the sewer was just as old and it collapsed just as badly, and it smelled just as bad. So this is a problem with old alcantarillas. Olía muy mal. También se comete mal con las alcantarillas ya bien hace el departamento de limpieza. Muchos que dicen que estamos muy, muy retrasados para actualizar el sistema. Estamos a una ciudad más acreditada que otras ciudades en el país. Quiero pedirles que lo vean, pero es una propuesta muy, muy cara. Creo que ustedes dijeron que hay una cuenta que quizás pueda pagar parcialmente el costo que tomará para mejorarla, para reconstruirla tal donde está. ¿Por qué no estamos reconstruyéndola tal donde está? Esto es lo que el departamento de limpieza propone hacer, mirando esto de un punto de vista técnico, rehabilitación, prevén... That's not the answer to my question. The question is, why are we just doing this?
Esa es la respuesta. ¿Por qué nos...? ¿Por qué estamos haciendo solo lo que estamos planeando hacer? Está teniendo hacerlo ahí donde está. Y el dinero de la cuenta de cada paradero, entonces, ¿cuál es la demora?
There's a... I'm missing a fact here. Right. Because the agenda says it's going to be relocated. Why is it relocated? And that's what I'm asking.
La gente dice que este va a ser reubicado porque va a ser que hemos tenido que agregar costos. Así, sí, ¿por qué esto es? Va a ser cambiado.
Okay, that's why I'm asking.
Eso es lo que estoy preguntando, ¿por qué va a ser cambiada? Tuvimos una petición hace unos cuantos años de la opción del alcalde para considerar cambiar esta alcantarilla, mirando fuentes adicionales para ver la diferencia entre rehabilitación y reubicación.
Do you know, can you share with me why they wanted to relocate it?
Replicación, esto puede tener porque es que ellos querían...
My understanding is that it would make the property more attractive to developers. Right now, there's a 30-foot easement over the existing sewer line that runs through the property. And so you would relocate to the edge of the property, is that correct? We would move it out into the public right of way, correct? All right. So, but from what you said earlier, Mr. Finan...
Señora economica, no podemos utilizar legalmente el trust fund, the Public Works Trust Fund. Es de cuenta de fondo fiduciaria, ¿cierto?
Public Works Trust Fund.
Public Works Trust Fund, okay. I don't want to... I want to get the sewer line fixed too. I'd like to get the ball fixed now that I have seen and smelled what the collapsed ones look like.
Siempre arreglado, esto es ahora que he visto...
I don't want us to do it illegally. So...
Después de que vaya a ser tendido un baton, quiero hacerlo legalmente. Por lo tanto, estamos, estamos, pero es para...
I think you said you were prepared to put up the money that it would cost to just rebuild it in place.
Invertir dinero que costará para mejorarla en tal cuando esté a ser alcalde, no más quiere cambiarlo. Parece que ellos deben de pagar con dinero legal, adecuado para hacerlo. No hay nada equivocado para reubicarlo para así. Pero se va a costar una gran cantidad de dinero. No creo que ninguno de los residentes quieran ver una adición en el costo de su alcantarilla para pagar. Por ejemplo, que no tiene que hacerse, la parte que tiene que hacerse es legítima. Por eso pagamos y...
And that's what we pay. Actually, most of what's in that charge is still paying off upgrading the hyperion sewage treatment, I think.
El costo estamos estatutizando para pagar lo que se está llevando a otra...
Again, we're going to committee and it'll come back. But I think it would be helpful if you have any legitimate sources of money to suggest...
Otros fuentes de dinero legítimos que se quieran incluir estas sugerencias al comité para así poder hacer el trabajo y hacerlo legalmente.
Thank you, Ms. Galanter. Chair recognizes Cosmo Reyes.
You know, Chinatown, I have places where the sewers accumulate around the freeways. Tengo cinco salidas e entradas de autopistas.
Alcantarillas, si para eso ahí, pero no pasa, pero tiene que subir la ventanas porque vuelve muy mal. Estoy tratando de averiguar estas soluciones de...
I also strongly believe that if we get into this, I'll take it while I can mentality, we all lose. So, inasmuch as I know that we have lawsuits, which I would wish we weren't in, I would hope we can use that money to deal with the infrastructure, to light up some positions, but...
Pero no, pero no, para llenar los bolsillos de los abogados en vez de mejorar esto. El hecho de que no estamos... La verdad es que estamos, estamos a priorizar solamente el olor, el olor. Si, consideramos esto, tenemos otro programa diferente, pero necesito por esto, esto presentamos. Esto excluye las prioridades, tenemos otras personas diciendo que es lo mejor que podemos hacer, mientras esto ocurre, la comunidad está sufriendo de este olor que no es adorable. Creo que me acuerdo con la otra vez que arreglamos las alcantarillas en el pueblo de China, el cual es una de las centrales más, más, más viejas. Eso es la primera ciudad de la ciudad. Quiero pipas limpias y tubería limpia en vez de... ¿Cuándo vamos a reparar esa tubería?
But again, let's follow the process.
Hay que seguir el proceso. Quiero apoyar, al fin y al cabo, con lo que se tratando hace para su comunidad, creo que hacerlo en sistema, una manera adecuada, no empezar con este... Pues de quién conseguirá el capital de dinero con cualquier, con lo que ocurre sin considerar, sin considerar los reglamentos.
Thank you, Ms. Reyes. We have no one else wishing to speak, so we have the motion to send us to two committees with a...
Speak one more, once more.
Mr. Holden, for a third time.
Right. Mr. Reyes makes a good point. And when this matter coming for my committee, be prepared to identify all of the lines in the city of Los Angeles that needs to be repaired. This one is on the verge of collapsing. As the one a mile away, less than a mile, quarter of a mile away, it collapsed. It collapsed already. Now, in Chinatown, I don't know how close we are to a line collapsing that has never had one that collapsed.
Preparense porque esta no es la primera que será arreglada. Preparense porque tendrán que mejorar.
It's called meantime to repair.
Porque se están derrumbando, se están derrumbando.
There comes a time when you repair the project before you have a disaster. Meantime, you repair.
Tiene que repagar, hacer mejoramientos antes de que ocurra.
And that's what you're really talking about. If you know it's going to be a problem, it's an old...
Saben que va a haber un problema.
That this material will deteriorate at a certain age with a certain use, then you've got to repair before that happens.
Estos tienen que reparar, entonces, que esto es solo lo que está diciendo el señor Reyes. Esto ya se ha derrumbado, esto ya necesita reparación. Pero vamos a cambiar los reglamentos. Estamos enfocándonos en los asuntos, el proceso que decía de que si...
If you can get the attention of at least eight members of the city council, as we have today, to at least be alerted to the problem, to at least at some time, consider addressing the problem.
Entonces, la misión ha sido lograda. El hecho de que...
The fact that I raised it by saying, "Look what you're doing in Santa Monica Boulevard."
Que se han ido a ir a San, el Boulevard de Santa Monica.
Where there's no greater need than what we have in the inner city, in your area, in my area. And more in my area right now because the river's collapsing. Because the department has already said in their report, this sewer line is in need of repair. This sewer line should be relocated to be more functional. It was their recommendation.
Mejorar de que debe ser cambiada a otro lugar.
Then they just make that recommendation for years.
Lo hicieron hace...
That's why people don't trust government.
El gobierno.
Government is telling them, "This line needs to be repaired," and they know it, and then they do nothing about it.
Repararse y no hace nada.
Just no action taken. And you'll sit right there and say, "Let's not do anything because this is the wrong approach." Ms. Galanter is correct. We're not trying to help the developer. Even if the land becomes more valuable, where you're causing the developer to come into the area, fine, that's more tax for the city.
Si quieren llamar a una compañía para que me dé bien, esas son las puestas para la ciudad. No podemos agregar costes adicionales retroactivamente si no decía que sí correctamente, ¿es así?
That's correct. And that means you can pay back the trust fund if you borrowed the money from the trust fund at the time the developer comes in.